Well timed. Welcome, everybody. It's Monday, October 6, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of Moscow's City Council. Gina.
Good evening, everybody. Happy October. If you are able, please stand with us and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda, and this item consists of items that are routine and have been previously vetted by the administrative or public works and finance committees. And any item on the consent agenda can be removed for separate consideration by any member of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Everybody seconds.
Whichever, whoever you heard first. Okay.
Give it to Drew, Lori.
Okay. Haley.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
And Bryce.
Aye.
Okay, that one's done. Next up is the start of the regular agenda, and tonight we have the Mayor's Golf Tournament check presentation. Tyler, would you like to lead us off?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I am pleased to be here this evening to present this year's proceeds from the 11th Annual Mayor's Golf Tournament. In previous years, Amanda Argona with Community Events has generously been the representative to speak during this occasion, as she and Community Events played a tremendous role in planning for this event. However, new this year, Recreation took ownership and lead of the event in which I am humbled to represent and speak on this item this evening. Like in the previous traditions, a recipient is selected and receives the proceeds two consecutive years in a row, in which this year the proceeds had been selected to go to Leita Recovery Community. I do want to recognize and thank two sponsors this evening who donated at the highest levels. I'd like to thank long-running sponsor Mead and Hunt for their generous sponsorship of the party lunch sponsor, and Idaho Central Credit Union for their generous sponsorship of our shotgun breakfast sponsor. I, too, would like to acknowledge sponsors who have now donated for seven or more consecutive years now for this event. Thank you to Leita Credit Union, NRS, Kelly Kimberly Insurance, Rocky Butte Brewers, as well as the two sponsors previously mentioned. Lastly, I'd like to thank all the participants this year, and two, thank you to the University of Idaho for continuing this collaborative tradition. All those mentioned led to the great success of this year's event. And without further ado, I'm pleased to share that this year's Mayor's Golf Tournament proceeds are $3,547. I would like to invite those affiliated with the event this year, Mayor Beckey and Betsy Rawls, Recreation Manager. Betsy had assisted in planning and with the preparations for her first time, and two, hosted the event in my absence this year. So along this team, I'm humbled to present this year's proceeds via prop check to Daryl Kime with Leita Recovery Community.
And I'd like to add my thanks to city staff who put in excellent work to get all of this done. And I was there. It was a fun event. I really enjoyed it. The weather was fine. And the teams every year really, really look forward to this. So with that, the biggest check that I can recall us ever giving.
I have a few words. I'm a man of very few words, so we'll keep it very short tonight. I just want to thank the entire community and especially Mayor Beckey and the city for thinking of the recovery community. There's so many good causes in Moscow, but it was nice to be thought of. Thank you.
You're welcome. Want to take--
Don't forget that.
Don't forget your check.
Yeah, well, Tyler gets to take the check, put it on the scanner, reduce it. Okay, that's fun. Next up is Mayor's Appointment, of whom I have one, Mark Heinlein for the Moscow Tree Commission, expiring 12/31/2026.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Mark to the Moscow Tree Commission.
Second.
Third.
Good. Okay, this time Bryce.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Haley.
Aye.
Okay, Mark can't be here tonight, so we won't drag him up and make him say a few words. But welcome, Mark. Everybody, please keep your eyeballs on the city's website under the Government tab for Commissions, and it'll give you a clue about which commission has a vacancy and which one doesn't. If you're interested in getting involved with city and city activities is a great way to do it. Pick one that excites your interest and become a part of the process. Okay, that's done. Next up is public comment time, and for the next 15 minutes, in three-minute increments, we invite the public to come up to the podium, state your name, where you live, and then give us three minutes of your thoughts on what goes on, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda, nor pending before planning and zoning, nor pending before the zoning board of adjustment. So with those strictures, we start in and go.
Hi, glad to see you all. I'm Evan Holmes at 735 East 8th Street here in Moscow. I would like to see the city of Moscow create a library of plans for single-family homes between, say, 900 and 1,500 square feet that are pre-approved at community development, that have gone through the vetting process, that have the engineering, that have the elevations, and so they would sit there, available for anyone to use, which would allow someone with a lot to come in and skip some expense and some time, shorten the timeline, reduce the cost of getting started on building a small home on a lot. I think it could be done pretty quickly if we then, related to that, you establish a working group or task for us tied to planning and zoning, or tied to Affordable Housing Commission, whose single purpose is to find five or six single-family home, or create single-family home packages, or maybe a couple duplexes thrown in there, and get those through, I see he's here, through Justin's office, and get the engineering taken care of. So somebody, once again, shows up with a lot they want to develop. So all they have to do is a site plan and show the utility lines, and they're that much closer to starting. And it removes some of the daunting steps that some people face when they want to do this. So have that library ready for anyone who wants to use it, have it pre-approved, and establish a task force that's their only mission. I think within six months, we could have that going. So I'll stand here for any questions, but otherwise I'll do what I'm always supposed to do is sit down.
Any thoughts, Council?
Interesting idea. Thanks.
So honor for the council to chew on. Thank you, Evan.
Good evening, Mayor Beckey and Council. I'm Jonathan Adams of 621 South Jefferson Street. As President of the New St. Andrews College Civics Club, I would like to formally invite you all to the NSA Candidate Forum on Friday, the 24th of October, at 3:00 PM at the New Art Theater. Immediately following, you are also invited to a reception at the Pierian Gallery for faculty, civics club members, and you, in honor of the candidates. Thank you very much.
Can you say the time one more time for me?
3:00 PM at the New Art.
Is that open to the public?
It is open to the public, yes.
Great. So thanks very much for that. Appreciate the notice. Candidate forums are always one of the most exciting things there is, especially when you're not part of it for a change.
That's right, yes, sir. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Paul Camel, 1037 Four Mile Road, Viola, Idaho. And Mayor, just no offense, but the reason I don't play in the golf tournament is because you would have to call 811. Call before you dig. Just saying. I'm here tonight to cordially invite you to our 22nd Annual Pool Space and Water Summit. I did bring some posters over here, as well as you have flyers. Our keynote this year is kind of a really exciting young man, Daniel Rothberg. He has a Substack newsletter called Invisible Water, and I just want to read you a little bit about him, if I might take my full three minutes tonight. A major reason I write about water is to make it more visible. Water is uniquely tethered to place. It supports interconnected ecologies, and its use is governed through layers of complex social and political systems, laws, norms, traditions, information, and negotiation. Some of this we see, but much of it we don't see when we turn on the tap or get produce. It becomes apparent with things like data center boom, or how invisible water is stitched into our lives. This is especially true with groundwater, the invisible water source. So it's an exciting time. We're really pleased to have Daniel. He comes from, let's see, Davis, California, where he's working on an advanced degree in groundwater, mind you. This year, again, we'll hear the state of the basin. We'll have invites, we have do invites with both our ecology head, as well as Lieutenant Governor Beckey, as well as Chairman Wheeler from the Nespurs Tribe. We'll hear a little bit from Sasha McClarty, who did a study on the Columbia Basin groundwater study, really very insightful. Our contractor, HDR Consultants, give you a little update on the groundwater, or excuse me, the water study he's looking at on the Clearwater diversion, potentially for an additional water source. Just give you a little snippet there. They are just underway, as you well know. And then Dr. Jeff Langman will talk about some of the recharge study work we're doing along the front of both Moscow Mountain and all the way around to the base of Paradise Ridge. So again, it should be a fun night. I thank you for your financial support as well. Again, we wouldn't do it without our major pumper's and sponsors as well as many others. So with that, any questions I would stand for?
Informer to it.
Thank you all.
Very good. Thanks, Paul. Appreciate that. Anybody else want to jump up?
Mr. Mayor, just to echo what Paul was saying, the event is open to the public. So if water is on your mind, this is not just for city and governmental officials. This is open for the public. So just thought I'd plug that.
Okay, next up is Citizen Commission Report for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Betsy Rawls and Kat Harner, come on down.
Well, good evening, Council and community. My name is Betsy Rawls. I'm the Recreation Manager, and I'm pleased to introduce Kat Harner, who is our Chair of our Parks and Rec Commission. She is going to speak a little bit about what has been going on over the last year. Active community member, triathlete, fitness instructor, PE teacher. Her kids are involved in everything. She is a blessing to our commission, and I'm excited to hear what she has to say tonight.
Welcome, Kat.
Thank you. Thank you, Betsy, Mayor Beckey, Council, and city staff. So I'm excited to be on the commission. Still, they haven't kicked me off yet. Like Betsy so kindly said, I love sports. I love being active. I love Parks and Rec. When we first moved here in 2007 for grad school, I fell in love with community, and a big part of that was the Parks and Rec Department. So I got excited about a commission opening, and that's how I ended up where I am now. So this is the annual report, put together mostly by David Schott and Betsy. So I'll try not to read too much from the screen, but when I get nervous, I do that. So here are some of the commission members. I'm up there. Gretchen is in the audience this evening. Susan Steele, a lot of these names should sound familiar because they've been on here a long time. Ted Kisha, I think, is our longest member. Mark Heinlein, who you guys reappointed to the Tree Commission. Rich Gaylor is one of our newer members, very active in the community. Emily is our newest, or no, Alyssa is our newest. Emily is. Both fairly new, but excited about being on the commission. Sally, very active and is definitely a go-getter, gets things moving. I don't know who that is on the left. I can't see--
Haley Lewis, very recent picture.
No change whatsoever, yeah.
Betsy's the one in the blue there, and not the horse in the front. We are very happy to have Betsy. She also is getting things done. She had a huge, huge task list, and she's been plowing through it and making big plans. So we're very excited to have Betsy. And of course, David has been very active and puts together a lot of stuff for us. So the purpose of the commission is kind of an exciting one. We get to advise you guys on things from public playgrounds, athletic fields, our facilities, and other things recreation-wise that kind of pop up on city property or things controlled by the city. And we make plans, the short term and long term. The long-term ones, sometimes we're really impatient. We want to have things now, but the commission helps to kind of prioritize and move things around and hopefully get things happening because we're a really active community. And also, obviously, down there, policies, programs, personnel, budget. Dave loves dealing with budget numbers and stuff, but Betsy's been putting a lot of new programs through, which has been really exciting to see. I'll keep going here. Let's see. So one of the things that we did this year, which was pretty exciting, so that's an incredible acronym there, it's the Moscow School District City Playfields. I think I got that right. A lot of people call it Joseph Street Fields. Nope, it's the City Playfields. But it's a great collaboration between the school district and the city, and these fields are beautiful. And this particular day that is highlighted up there, ball teams got together, baseball teams got together with other community members, and they cleaned up. They put down this special dirt that they put in the infield. Drew probably knows a little bit, do you know about that? There's a whole special dirt science behind what they put on there. Dave was really excited about it. But it was just cool, honestly, to see kids. You've got kids out there pushing around dirt, and you have ownership when you put time. They spent like six hours out there that day. It was really cool to see. And those fields, I mean, are just a gem of our community. You drive by, and there's always something going on there, baseball, soccer, softball, and just frisbee. I mean, there's so much going out there. So it's really cool. That day was a really cool thing to see. Some other things that have been going on, Harvest Park Volunteer Project to promote pollinating, pollinator plantings. So oftentimes, they'll plant trees and different plants that encourage pollinators. What I really love about this is that they also provide educational opportunities for students, but also people like me, that I'm a transplant from Texas. I don't know what kind of pollinators grow well out here. They will tell you all about it. They went out to, I think what is pictured there on the left, is they went to the farmer's market and had a real cool display, and they even handed out bookmarks that had little flowers that were pollinators on there. So that was really cool. Appointed new B-City USA Subcommittee Member. Yep, so there's lots of things going on with that Harvest Park, and also B-City, how they work together to inform the public and make good things happen in the city of Moscow. So every year, there is a new pesticide-free park. This year, it was Morgan's Orchard Park, as you see there. And it's one of our newer parks. We really fought for this one. We got the park approved, and they put all that, the city, the kids got to vote on what they wanted in the park, but then there was something with the tiles where the glue got discontinued, and so we had this awesome park, but you couldn't go on it because it was on concrete. So we finally got it finished, and it's a pesticide-free park this year. And it's a real cool, like, it's worth driving by to check it out and maybe get out and play a little bit. I mean, you might as well. It's pretty cool looking. So we went and visited on our annual tour. So this year, we did it in June, which I was glad sometimes it's July or August, which gets pretty steamy. But we basically go around to the bigger parks in town and check them out. This year was the first time I went to Vista Park, which I didn't know existed. It's worth looking on the Parks and Rec website to see how many parks we actually have. It's very impressive. And if you've driven around Moscow, you turn a corner, and there's a park you've never seen before, which is pretty cool, honestly, that every little facet of our community, there's a park really close nearby. So you can see, these are the parks that we went by. In the West Palouse River Drive property, that's been kind of a very talked-about property. So I'm sure you guys know all about that one. That was kind of cool to see how much they've done in a short period of time. This year, we presented it to farmer's markets, or I guess had a table. I don't know if we presented. We more like chased people down. We were really excited to get people, we wanted people to talk more about Parks and Rec. There was sort of a lull for a little bit with participation, but I think we're starting to gain some traction here and some steam. So it's been exciting to see, and we got some people excited about coaching and participating. And so, yeah, it was really, it was kind of a fun thing to do, get involved. A little bit more on our overview. This was kind of cool to see. So Sally that I mentioned, a commission member, is also president of the pickleball club, and she is a very ambitious lady. She gets things done. And she is working on getting a pickleball court at Mountain View Park. It's a cool area. It seems perfect for it. She did not like where it was on the capital improvement plan. She's like, well, let's move it up. And so she's getting fundraisers happening. She's looking for grants. And this is the kind of stuff that I think is so cool, like, oh, it's here. We can't make it happen. We can. That collaborative effort, I love it so much. So I'm excited to see more things like that. We also, every time there's a new subdivision, we get Parkland dedications, and we vote on if it's a good deal or not. And that's why we have so many parks in Moscow, is because of this thing that's in our, it's our code, city code, or whatever, that if you're building houses, we got to have green space. So we approved some more on that new subdivision. And a very exciting meeting was that capital improvement plan, talking numbers and where things fall. And it's tough. It's tough to, you know, prioritize stuff like that because it's on that list for a reason. So people care about it. So that was a, it was a long meeting, but it was interesting to talk about that and see what people are wanting to do. Here you see largely Betsy's home at the HERC. It's a very busy, busy place. It stays very busy, especially in the wintertime. I don't think you can get a spot on the court. You guys can kind of read all the numbers, but the different offerings that they have there, tone and stretch, basketball, pickleball, pickleball open gym. I just left my daughter's volleyball game a minute ago to get you to come here. And you can reserve the gym. You can reserve the NPR. And Betsy's told me about some exciting things that she has planned. The karate class that is listed up there, and the cheer class are new things that she just brought in. Movement in the park has been something that's been happening for a while. Theater classes, I know, happen during the summer. Commission meetings, other meetings such as that, happen in that NPR. So, and then finally, the Egan, which is that, it's that sort of nondescript building across from the tennis courts at the middle school. I think it kind of reminds me of the Tardis, in that it looks really small on the outside, and then you go inside, and it's massive, and it's got air hockey, and it's got a, it's such a cool place for teens to hang out. They've got that kids camp and after-school things, those dog obedience classes, the kids' night out, which I feel like parents don't take advantage enough of. It's like a babysitter, but your kids are really active, and they're seeing friends. It's a real cool thing that our city does. Private party rentals, after-school stuff. It's just such a cool place, and it's a safe place for kids to hang out after school. I ran through a lot there. This picture right here, I don't know what the year is, but I do know that that is East City Park there, and which is our premier park. So if you guys have any questions, me and Betsy will try to answer for you.
I did have a question. On the pesticide-free parks, is it a rotating, like, one a year? So after like 10 years, we have 10 that are pesticide-free, or is it always one a year?
It's one a year. So that park, they'll have signs out that say this is a pesticide-free park, and then it'll rotate to another one, and then they'll come back and they'll start using pesticides on there again.
I love this idea. I'd like to see us stretch out the times in between. But anyway, okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Kat, for coming. One thing that you highlighted on, I thought was really successful, when I was liaison a year ago to the commission, and so we often heard from the Baseball Association about maintenance and improvement. And so you highlighted how there's that collaboration, something that people came and said, hey, we really want this, and the commission staff made it happen. I wish more of those people that wanted it showed up. But there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people there, and a lot of kids there, my son being one of them, and he got to pack around bags of turfis, is what we're saying, turfis, for the field. So it was, yeah, I think that's a really successful thing, where this commission's got to listen to the public, what they've wanted, and they've implemented. There's been several, but this is, I think, a really good example of progress. Thanks for your presentation.
Nothing, 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 nothing. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy.
Okay, next up is a public hearing, and this is amending the MCC Title VII, Chapter III, Regarding the Electrical Code, starring Justin Goodwin. And the way public hearings work is that we open the hearing, Justin presents the salient facts and tells us about it, and council can ask questions. After the questions and growing of Justin come to an end, we open it for public input, in the order of public testimony in favor, public testimony in opposition, and public testimony of a neutral type. After that, the public hearing closes, council deliberates, and they reach a conclusion on potential ordinance action. So, Justin, the public hearing is open, and you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yeah, the document you have in front of you is Title VII, Chapter III of Moscow City Code. The state of Idaho adopted the 2023 National Electrical Code, and then I've edited it through our Building Code Advisory Committee. The great thing is, is the body of the code finally caught up with the city of Moscow. So if you notice, we were able to strike a bunch of amendments out because now they are in the body of the code. Really, the only thing that we added was the first paragraph there, and in a nutshell, because the electrical code gets amended, often they do rules and stuff down at the legislator. Instead of bringing it forward every time they do a rule, or every time they do a change within that year of code, that paragraph there basically is saying, we automatically adopt it as the city of Moscow, too. Now, if there's a bunch of changes and stuff, I will still come and inform you guys of the changes that the state has done. Or if we are going to go to a new code cycle, so go to the 2025 code, we will go through the Building Code Advisory Committee and get it adopted that way. So really, it's pretty easy tonight because there's not much other than that one paragraph. If you have any questions, feel free.
Sounds efficient.
Council's sounding efficient, too. Okay, at this time, public testimony in favor. Public testimony in opposition. Public testimony of a general nature. Okay, hearing none. Public hearing closes. Council proceeds to deliberate.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question for Justin now, as he sat down. Sorry. Mr. Mayor, I did have one question for Justin now as he sat down. Sorry. Um, so the state adopted the 2023 National Electrical Code. Can do you remember what year the state adopted the um, International Building Code councils recommend or codes? Is it 2018?
So that's what we're on right now. It started in 2000.
Hey.
Um, and that's a, so the way the, the way the state set up, not to go too deep into it, is you've got the Electrical Board, the Building Code Board, and the Plumbing Code Board, and those are the ones that make recommendations and then the legislator adopts it. Um, so the Building Code Board is on like a um, 15-year cycle, it seems like. Um, we're just now reviewing the 2024. The electrical code is more on a four-year cycle. So.
So it's the most, the most up-to-date or um, the most recent batch that's been adopted and honored by the state so far.
Correct. That is correct. Even though, so even though the, the codes are actually three-year cycles, it's just the state is, they choose, they choose to whatever they want to do. So then we just follow what they want to do.
That's my only question, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome, Your Honor. I move that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings. And that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, seems we had so much discussion there. We'll go ahead with the vote. Bryce.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Hooray. Okay, that passes and we're on ordinance number 2025-10, right? Okay. In ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title VII, Chapter III, providing for the adoption of the 2023 National Electric Code and any subsequent amendments as adopted by Title 54, Chapter 10 of Idaho Code, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval and publication according to law. And there we have it. Next up, we have item seven, Personnel Policy Light Duty Amendment. Sharon. Sharon Games going to talk to us here.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Games and I'm the HR manager here at the city of Moscow. And um, I wanted to talk about today, the city's current light duty policy is um, it currently allows for a maximum of 60 days for an employee to be on light duty per the policy. And um, when we have, uh, we've recently done some research to determine um, what other municipalities are doing in our area as well as um, some research on how long it takes to heal for certain types of injuries. And so uh, the conclusion of our research is um, the um, the recommendation to extend the duration of the light duty, duty policy from 60 days to six months with a review at 30-day intervals.
And there we have it.
Pardon?
And there it is.
Um, I think so. Do you have questions? I know we have some information in the packet. I'm happy to go more into detail if you'd like me to. I can talk about the different types of injuries, the time it takes to heal, more than happy to provide you with any information you'd like.
Let's hear what questions counsel might have.
I think this is smart.
I think it makes sense, um, being a little bit, uh, especially based off of research and everything that we found. And um, yeah, I'm in fear for, so with that, um, I'm feeling moved to approve um, the proposed policy um, amendment associated um, associated resolution.
Second. Second. Further questions or discussion?
One point of clarification. Sharon, does that mean, so if we're extending beyond 60 days, if adopted in a mere moment, um, the, it's up to six months and every month after the 60 days, every 30 days after the 60 days is when the check-ins happen?
It's actually every 30 days, starting at 30 days.
Okay, groovy. Thank you.
Or when any doctor's note is received as well.
Great. That was all I needed. Thank you.
And we did, we discussed it in leadership and it made sense to me, especially given the physical nature of some of the, the work, like police officers and maintenance crews and people like that who um, really need a full recovery from whatever, whatever is happening to their body at the time. So, thank you.
Okay. So, Julia.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Okay, that one passes. Excellent. Thank you for coming. Next up, we have the Summer Four by Ten Work Schedule Pilot Report. Bill Belknap.
Give me one second, Your Honor. All right, thank you, Your Honor and counsel. Uh, just have a quick report for you this evening. Uh, so provide a little bit of background on, uh, you know, the city has about 165 full-time employees uh, that utilize really a wide variety of work schedules depending upon uh, the services being offered. So we have everything from law enforcement to that are running 12-hour shifts to EMS and paramedic personnel that are currently running 48-hour shifts. Um, we have a lot of our field operations run 10-hour shifts during the course of the week and, and many of our office operations are on an eight-hour shift. So we do have a kind of a wide variety of work schedules depending upon what services a department is offering. Um, we had been approached in administration by employees that were looking to have maybe some greater flexibility or look at some possible alternative work schedules in the concept of a kind of summer offer schedule, which really shifted to that four-ten schedule for the summer, summer period was something that employees had requested that we potentially explore. On June 2nd of this year, the council authorized an eight-week summer uh, office hours pilot for our city business offices. Uh, so that would constitute to four 10-hour workdays for the course of the week with city business offices closed on Fridays. And we did have some variation that happened during that time period. We did want to make sure that we had um, building inspection services available five days a week. And it just so happened that Justin's wife, Sam, works for the university and was on a four-ten schedule and had Mondays off. So he would take Monday off and then he would come in on Friday and perform inspections so that we could maintain um, services through the course of the week. And similar with the engineering department, because we are inspecting a lot of construction projects. Now, there are a number of contractors work four-ten's, but sometimes they also work extended hours on Fridays. Um, so we had some variation. We had some employees that either due to um, childcare requirements or other limitations, um, stuck with the five eights, um, as long as they had productive work they could do during that time period. So um, that was essentially what we conducted this year. Uh, that pilot ran from June 30th uh, through August 22nd. Uh, June 30th was a little bit late. I was actually out of the country for a couple of weeks visiting our daughter. So I, I wanted to be here when we implemented. So if there are any concerns, questions, I'd be here uh, to answer any uh, uh, any concerns of the public. During that time period, um, from the 30th through August 22nd, uh, city business offices were open from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and closed on Fridays. Employees had a unpaid 30-minute lunch break to make that 10-hour workday, that 10-hour workday to fulfill our 40-hour work week. Uh, it's very similar to, again, a lot of offices at the University of Idaho sometimes shift to summer office hours, as does the administrative offices for the school district during the summer months. Uh, we notify the public through our website, social media posts. We had postings on all office buildings a month leading up to um, the pilot. Uh, with an email that we provided for any comments or concerns the public might have. We did not receive any. I did not. I had one call from a community member that I know well. When the first news article hit after the June 2nd meeting, we talked through, through it. Didn't have any particular concerns, just had some questions about it. Um, but otherwise I, my office did not receive any specific complaints. I did ask the council if the council received any complaints from the public, and I don't know that any were necessarily recorded during that time period. Um, so on the conclusion of that, and I, as we talked back on June 2nd, we were going to do a survey of uh, city employees, see if they liked it, um, maybe what worked well, what, what were some of the challenges they faced. Uh, so Sharon and the Human Resources Department developed and distributed anonymous survey that was sent to all employees seeking feedback on the pilot. Uh, we received 76 survey responses. I mean, there are a large number. We have nearly fifty employees in the police department that work their own individual shifts. Um, but so we did receive 76 responses. Forty-six of those included some detailed comments that are included in the report that was in your packet. Um, some highlights from there, about 73% of the respondents felt that team morale improved during the course of the, the pilot project. We had 78% of the respondents indicated they were either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the summer schedule. Fifty-three of the respondents felt their productivity actually improved during the pilot. Um, while another 46% felt that their productivity stayed the same. So that's 99% combined, uh, there between those two categories. We also had 76% of respondents indicated that they would like uh, to consider repeating uh, the summer hour program for next summer. And 71% of respondents felt that the schedule improved their overall well-being. Uh, so we talked through this in kind of a little more detail there is how satisfied were you with the four-ten summer schedule? Again, the purple is the very satisfied at 64%. Um, we had the somewhat satisfied adding another 15%. Um, 13% indicated they were neither satisfied nor dissatisfied. And then for those that were somewhat dissatisfied, 4%, and very dissatisfied was another 4%. So eight total there. Uh, we asked, what benefits did you experience while working the four-ten schedule this year? Um, so the largest, the most frequent response was better work-life balance. So 56 respondents indicated that. 44% indicated increased productivity. Um, 41 of the respondents identified improved morale. 29 uh, respondents indicated having fewer commutes. We do have a large number of employee, employer, employees that either live lowest centry, dairy, or outlying rural areas. And then another 18 identified just other category of benefits. Uh, we also asked, what challenges did they face working that four-ten schedule? Um, the greatest response, so 39 of the respondents indicated none. Um, the next highest was 21 uh, respondents indicated just fatigue during long shifts, you know, longer days. Uh, we had 12 employees indicate impact on personal commitments. Another um, 12 indicated other, and those were in the kind of detailed comments. And then a few that indicated they felt there was potentially reduced collaboration or difficult managing workload during that shorter work week. Um, we asked if their, did the productivity change while working the four-ten schedule? So 53% of respondents indicated they felt their uh, productivity improved during that concentrated week. Uh, 46 indicated it stayed the same and one, one individual, one respondent indicated they thought it declined. Well, we asked, what did they perceive to be changes in customer or client service? So 71% of respondents indicated they did not feel that there was any change to customer service. Uh, 17% actually felt it was positive, having some of the extended office hours. And we did have 12% indicated they thought it was potentially a negative uh, to customer service. Um, we asked whether they felt that the four-ten schedule improved their overall well-being. So we had 42% that strongly agreed with that statement. 29% that agreed with it, 20% that were neutral, 6% that disagreed, and 3% that strongly disagreed. Uh, so we did also ask some questions of supervisors. So we asked if they felt that four-ten schedule made it easier to manage their team. Uh, so 11 individuals responded that they agreed with that statement. Five strongly agreed, eight were neutral, four disagreed, and one individual strongly disagreed with that statement. We asked supervisors if they felt team morale improved during the course of the pilot project. So we had eight indicate they strongly agree with that statement. 13 agreed with it. Seven were neutral and only one disagreed with that statement. We did ask supervisors if they experienced any scheduling or coverage challenges. Um, so the majority, 61% indicated no. Uh, 21% felt that they did at times, and we had another 18% that indicated other, and those recovered some of the, the open comments as well. So we did provide an opportunity for employees to provide any open-ended comments um, they would like to. Uh, there certainly were a number of them, and they're all detailed in the report. I won't go through all of them, 46 comments, but a number of them indicated that they enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to try the four-ten schedule. Um, several indicated they'd like to follow it year-round if at all possible. Um, we did have other respondents felt, you know, four-ten or a 10-hour workday was not a, you know, one-size-fits-all-employees situation. They'd like to have greater flexibility. Maybe somebody indicated they'd like 13 different schedules to choose from. That might be a little bit too much, but I think there was just a general sense of wanting some, some greater flexibility if that was possible. Um, there were some respondents that felt it didn't work well with certain customers, those being primarily contractors. Um, or created issues with managers potentially not being present on Friday with, maybe they needed some direction in a particular situation. Um, and there were certainly some respondents felt that the four-ten schedule was taxing, left less time in the evenings, or maybe didn't fit their childcare schedules. And we did make accommodations for employees that were in that, that type of situation. So um, overall, and it's kind of funny, I was, as I was reviewing the, the uh, the report, I got an email from the city of McCall. Uh, they are actually looking and going to a four-ten schedule. They're going to do a six-month pilot um, and try it for a six-month period and, and see if that's something that they want to continue with year-round. And they were just calling as I was reviewing the report of how'd it go for you. Heard, saw in the news, you guys did this as a pilot. You know, what was the experience? What was employee feedback? So I was able to share that uh, with city McCall. Um, overall, I think it, it was well-received by the employees. The vast majority felt it improved their well-being, being, um, they were satisfied with the schedule and would like to try it next year. And again, we, as we covered those points already. Um, but certainly as we identified through some of the comments that it may not be a perfect fit for all employees or all departments. Um, so if it is something that we want to repeat, then I'd like to have all the departments kind of talk to their employees in a little bit more detail after having this experience to see if there's things we can do to better fine-tune it to, to make it something to be more beneficial and attractive to employees and making sure that we are meeting our customer service obligations and needs. But with that, I want to provide that quick report and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
My one point of clarification, Bill, this was an opt-in, not a required thing for.
Correct. Yes, we had employees that said, hey, I've got, you know, childcare, whatever it might be, I'd like to stick to the five eights. And we, they were allowed to do that.
Yeah, I guess to, to add in, I appreciate the, the report here. And I was excited to see data-driven results of, of positive feedback, for sure. That's great. Um, I am curious, like, what would be some avenues of kind of accommodating the, the less-than-pleased folks to kind of like go back to the drawing board to make sure that there isn't just a couple of those dissatisfied or strongly dissatisfied, just.
So I've tasked all the department managers to go back and work and talk with their employees. So they can have a more of a dialogue than just an open and a comment on, on the surveys to, to really try to understand what were some of the challenges? Um, what can we do to make it better if we want to consider doing this next year? Um, so at this point, I don't have an answer to that question, other than having a dialogue among the departments deciding what really works well. Um, it's, it's one of those things where you wanted some consistency among city business offices so that, you know, every building didn't have different hours so that people could understand, hey, on Fridays, city offices are closed, just for predictability. So it's, it's something that we need to kind of balance, something that's clear and understandable to the public, but also provides and meets, you, you know, department-specific and individual needs. Um, so we could certainly kind of walk through that and see if we can identify. I want it, don't, we don't want it to be something that's become so unwieldy because we have so many variations. Um, so that'd be something we'd have to kind of walk through as well.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
I, I just think, uh, I, I think it was a great program. I think anything that doesn't cost us any money and makes city employees happier is, is a win. So I'm really glad that we tried it and I hope that um, we can try it again next summer. Thanks.
Mayors?
Double that, yeah.
Double.
So we can uh, call the report accepted.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
So next up, we move on to council reports. Julia.
Um, I only had Fair and Affordable Housing Commission this week, and I will say that um, we failed to make, meet, make a quorum. So um, and it was on the day of that commission meeting. So it's really unfortunate when that happens. It's kind of a waste of everybody's time. So if you are on a commission, remember.
Show up.
It's an obligation. Thanks. That's it. That's my speech for today.
Drew. So uh, historic preservation uh, commission, so um, they toured the 1912 Center um, and just talked about work that is um, going to be taking place in that building. Um, I uh, was not able to attend that meeting, but it was very successful. Um, and Nils Reese came by at my office and we chatted for about two hours. I know, um, it was very successful. Um, and so, and then they're getting ready for planning for um, their Orchid Awards. Uh, the date is on the city webpage. Um, what is it?
November 13th.
November 13th, yes. Um, so yeah, please go. It's always good. And it is at the 1912 Center. Thank you um, for that. Um, for Moscow Urban Renewal um, Commission, so uh, or Agency, sorry. For Moscow Urban Renewal Commission, so, or Agency, sorry. Some exciting news is we're going to have some trees in the ground around the property. So trees are coming in. And so that, if the tree, I do not know my trees, like my counselor to my right. And so they are exciting and they're good species. They've been checked out by everything.
Leaves and stuff. And roots, and roots even.
And water. But to know the scientific name.
Oh, yeah, you gotta know that.
I'm, I'm gone. But it is in the meeting minutes. Yeah, it's good. But I'll, I'll let you know on the planet. So we're, we're looking forward to that. Farmers Market Commission, that meets tomorrow. So I'll have something for next meeting. And then I was not able to attend the UVI breakfast, kind of the quad meeting, because I was on PTO last week, so I shut down. But unlike today, I opened back up, unlike the federal government. So, yeah.
So you might mention, relevant to the farmer's market, it was voted number one in Idaho, number one specifically west, and number 16 in the country.
Yes, so we, we're, we're good.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. And yeah, so go buy whatever you like at the farmer's market or, yeah, so I'll be there. So that's good.
Sandra.
Thank you. Yes, the trees are exciting. I was also on a urea, and that was the big highlight of, of that. I too don't remember the, the name, but excited for those roots and leaves. Let's see, I had, the 17th was Constitution Day. And it was, we actually celebrated that at the University of Idaho. Kaylee Brightman, League of Women Voters and Instructor at LCS, he gave a presentation about the Constitution, which was great. I will say that yesterday I attended the opening of the Palouse Watercolor Socius at the Damon Barn, and it'll be up for about a month or more. I have not had fire, that's on Wednesday, but I do want to mention that it is the annual pancake breakfast coming up this Saturday because of homecoming. Starts 7:30-ish, 8. But the very exciting thing about that, besides the amazing food, is they will take credit cards this year, assuming they can get electronics to work. But looks like cards are an option, which is nice for, I always forget cash. And luckily, last year, some nice soul said, oh, Sandra, I'll pay for this. And then I bought them a drink later. So candlelit with cards this year. I'm excited about that. Couple other things coming up before the next time we meet. Nope, take it back. I think that's it. Pancake breakfast. See y'all there. Really great stuff. At the Main Street Fire Department Building, right across from One World to Mileina. Thanks.
Gina.
Well, I was all excited to tell you some more Latin names and some more trees, but the Tree Commission, alas, was canceled this past week due to both the chair and our staff liaison being otherwise engaged. So it was kind of a downer start for October. I will say, though, that my, my genko in the front yard is just beautiful right now, starting to turn. It's going to be a gorgeous fall. Other than that, I have no excuse for not making the early morning breakfast, except for the early morning part of that. We got it. We got to have a different plan. We need some flexibility like our city hours. Anyway, other than that, happy to be here. That's all I have, sir.
Bryce, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last council meeting on September 15th, been relatively quiet. Sustainable Environment Commission was canceled on the 16th. Admin Committee was also canceled on the 22nd. But we did have Planning and Zoning last Wednesday on the 24th, where we worked through a city impact agreement. And I'm sure that that'll come down, come our way pretty soon. And then I too did not make the early morning breakfast. But I was, yeah, I did not make it. I did not surprise myself nor anyone by not making it. Did not make it. I do want to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce and everybody that helped put, put forth Moscow Fest this past Saturday. One of the best things of the whole year in Moscow, in my opinion. And I was telling all my classes last week, and you all heard me say this a lot, but I always tell my students, get to know the town you live in, especially if this is their first year up to Moscow. And I told them, come stroll through, catch the vibes, see the merriment. And, and some of them today, they were like, that was really awesome. I'm like, yeah, Moscow does some cool stuff. So, so yeah, big props to the team that put forth Moscow Fest on Saturday. I plan on attending the Association of Idaho Cities District Meeting on Wednesday. And then I plan on attending homecoming festivities this weekend. Go Vandals. Right on.
Can I add something?
Yes.
So I was coming home from Boise yesterday on the 5 o'clock or 5:42 flight into our lovely new airport and, and beautiful runway. And for the entire hour and one minute flight, the stewardess, airline attendant, I don't know what the title is, that they use nowadays, but she kept saying Moscow. It was like brushing my hair the wrong way. And so finally, as I was getting off, you know, snarky little me, I told the pilot that it is not Moscow. And he was like, okay, ma'am, get off the plane. But somebody knew, right? Somebody knew. Anyway.
Haley.
On the airport note, I, Mr. Mayor, I would love if there's some cool public art installation that we can do with the turnstile.
Yep, my favorite is take the Alcatraz Gate, spray paint it, put a wind vane on it, and stick it in the parking lot, and everybody who sees it knows.
I'm, I'm game. So that idea came from, Anzabala came to town. And I, so I was visiting with her. She's a former city council member. And she had not realized in the time since she moved away to New Mexico that the new, not hangar, the new terminal would be open. So she was, she was lamenting the loss of the Alcatraz Gate a little bit. But as far as real, so that's a, an aside. So I think the 14th or 15th of September, the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee held their first SEG, which is the Stakeholder Engagement Group. I don't love the acronym. And there will be more to come, so I'll be sure to share that opportunity. But this is the public engagement piece for the contractor we're working with, who is developing the plan for the Stick a Straw in the Clear Water and Secure Water Rights conversation. And so there's, it's interactive. They are, I think, working on having these SEGs be, I shouldn't call it that, the SEG meetings to be at a variety of timings to make sure that people who have regular nine-to-fives can attend. Had a great time at the Parks and Rec meeting with Kat and Gretchen. Two things to note, Betsy had rolled out a new cheer and, is it karate? Classes through the winter and fall that are like a total hit. And we have another set, section opening. So send your friends, neighbors, kiddos that direction. They're still always recruiting for referees and parent coaches or coaches in general. And the other thing to note, the planting party for Harvest Park has historically been in the fall. They moved that subcommittee, moved it to the spring. So I'll let you know when I hear more about that. Smart Transit has been a lot, it's been taking a lot of my time. We are having a strategic planning conversation as the team is planning to procure some new buses and exploring maybe if there are smaller bus or busing options that will still meet our public's needs, that would enable us to have more frequent services and not require our drivers to have CDLs. So there's some of those conversations happening. Very, very beginning of those conversations, enjoyed the, I did make it to the breakfast. I was there at 7:10 after I had my coffee, but it was a great conversation. Moscow Fest was great. Volunteered all, I was there from 2:30 to 8:00 on, on Saturday. We weren't quite sure what to expect, and I think it was a bigger community turnout than I, I was expecting to see. Had a great time at the Bora Symposium, which is one of the, my most favorite things that the University of Idaho programs do. The, there were three nights of programs. The first one was all about the impact of tariffs on agriculture. And so there were some great common, comments from the Pulse Association and cattle staff member at UVI. Yes, Tim McGreevy would tell you pulses, not just pea and lentils, but yes. And then the keynote was with KT McFarland, who is a former cabinet member for President Trump. And I think it was an interesting conversation. I was really proud of the students who asked hard questions and got good answers. So always remember the Bora Symposium is in October and not the spring. And the last thing is looking forward to the Association of Idaho Cities Fall Meeting this Wednesday. And Drew had some good feedback, which was, what can we do to make sure that those really important info dump sessions are accessible for folks on city council who also have big kid jobs? And making sure that it is an accessible message. So I'll be taking that message back to the AIC staff because Drew has big kid job things to do, and we all do, and it's hard to juggle. So. Those are my seven updates, Mr. Mayor.
So Coolio, yeah, and the AIC is from 9:00 to 3:00. So that. Furthering with schedule issues, councilors, we got the Town Gown event scheduled for the 13th of November, 5:30. Location yet to be determined, which kind of butts up right against the Orchid Awards. So we might have it at the 1912, just to facilitate people who want to do both of those meetings. And again, homecoming this weekend, parade at 10 o'clock. And then off to tailgating and then the game itself a little later on. Fingers crossed Vandals. For me, we had the Teacher Appreciation Day just on Monday up the hill at the 1912, where we got all the teachers in town together and said, thank you, and we're surprised you have a last nerve left for the kids to get on. So they do a great job and deserve the recognition that they get. My big event lately was a trip to DC with the airport people. Tony Bean, Airport Manager, and Francis Benjamin, Mayor of Pullman, went back to DC and saw four senators and two representatives, so the Idaho and Washington delegations. And talked to them about the continuing resolutions and the failure of Congress to pass a budget, essentially, because the failure to pass a budget means you get continuing resolutions, which means the FAA gets money in bits and pieces. And when you're trying to do construction in an airport, if it's coming out in bits and pieces, you really have a hard time contracting to get anything done, much less if it goes on too long. You miss an entire construction season and try to talk a contractor into guaranteeing a price for the next season, eight months away, probably not happening. So we begged the indulgence of Congress to get a budget. Also talked about the alternate water supply by way of keeping, keeping Congress appraised to the fact that we're going to need some major assistance financially to accomplish that. And anything that they can do to assist with acquisition of water rights and dealing with the Corps of Engineers and fisheries and everything else associated with drawing water out of the clear water. We kind of alerted them to all of these facts, just a heads up. And also discussed a little bit Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is probably beyond the scope of a 30-minute recitation as to what that is. But we did ask for federal assistance on that one as well. I think I've covered everything going on there. Nothing from Bill. Ark, what do I hear?
Second.
Good. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming and sticking with us.